We could probably even move it, you'll see like where we're at in like the next couple.
She got in Texas and then went to Florida. She's in Florida.
Hello, it is August 11th, 2021 at 7:00 PM. We're at Board of Education regular meeting. This is the opening ceremony. Roll call please.
Mr. Dobbins.
Here.
Mrs. Etter.
Here.
Mr. Naaman.
Here.
Mr. Souchaki.
Here.
Mrs. Schukert.
Here. Five present, zero absent. On behalf of the board, I would like to welcome all students, staff, parents, and interested community members to tonight's Board of Education meeting. The board values and encourages any public comments on education issues. Anyone having an interest in actions of the board may participate during the public comment section of the meeting. Please identify yourself as you have on the comment sheet. A copy of the board meeting agenda is available for review on our school district's website. Please silence your cell phone during the meeting. And we're going to stand now for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next up, item two. Can I please have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Naaman.
Second.
By Mr. Souchaki. Any discussion?
Two things. We pulled off the presentation by Mrs. Houtch and we had a discussion at the administrative retreat and a lot of questions arose about that Apollo program so that she didn't want to do that tonight. And Mrs. Schukert, I know we've got some people here to comment tonight. You certainly have the ability with public comments above the presentations. That way they don't have to sit through half an hour presentations on safety and our financial statements, so.
Okay. So do we, it's not just being said like?
Yeah, once we start the meeting, you say we've got some public comments, we're going to move that in front of the presentations and go from there.
Okay. Roll call.
Uh, Mr. Naaman.
Aye.
Mr. Souchaki.
Aye.
Mr. Dobbins.
Aye.
Mrs. Etter.
Aye.
Mrs. Schukert.
Aye. Motion passes five zero. So we'll go ahead with public comments. It's a financial, it's a financial presentation, let me tell you guys. Okay.
Oh, okay.
We'd want it.
These are made for seventh graders.
Yeah, okay.
It's that financial presentation. Alright, so we'll leave it as this. And Mr. Muchio?
Dave Wallace, actually, first.
Oh, I'm sorry. She is, sorry. Mr. Wallace.
So basically, Mr. Evans asked me to talk to you today a little bit about student safety in the district. I play a lot of roles with student safety on top of my job as a director of IT. But basically, just sort of going to talk to you today about some of our new initiatives that we're implementing for next school year and then sort of some items that we're doing this school year, so. Also with my job duties, I do the safety plan, make sure it's all submitted and we're compliant on a year-over-year basis. And then, you know, basically in October, we do another emergency management test, which is evacuation or lockdown here at the district while their kids are like that. So one of our first initiatives was going through and looking at all of our outside surveillance cameras and replacing some of them. We had a big issue with the high school student lot area as far as coverage goes. And over the summer, we were able to replace the student lot, the plus garages, and basically all East 71st Street on the high school and middle school side. So it's a bad picture because I took it today during the storm, but that's sort of what we're doing now. So we have a lot better coverage. And of course, you know, as you know, the police station does have access to our cameras and they watch it on a live basis.
Just one note on that. Maybe a few weeks ago, the police had a little chase down 71st Street and one of the vehicles ended up embedded in one of the houses and one got away. We were able to pick up the license plate off of our cameras and help the police out on the second vehicle, so.
They come in handy twice this year, or this summer so far, so. It was a great, great job. So on that. The next item we have is a new program called School Safe ID, which is our visitor management solution here. So now when visitors come in the building, they're going to be required to go to the office as they work before, scan their driver's license, and we'll automatically do a background check on them to see if they're sex offender or flagged in our system, you know, maybe custody issues or, you know, just what parents be concerned about, you know, so on and so forth. So we implemented two of these kiosks, one in each office. Real easy, parents can swipe their ID. They can, actually, once they do it once, they can get a little app on their phone that'll automatically top up when they get here, scan themselves in, and then it prints out a nice badge for them where they can go on and walk around the building as needed. So that's one of our new systems. The other portion of this is we're going to use this for student check-in and checkout. So, you know, we're going to go away from the paper system and use this for student check-in and checkout.
This will help us with, if something happens, we have a drill. We know, we certainly know our students, our teachers always account for our students during any of our drills. But we have visitors in the building. Now we'll be able to go to the kiosk and know who's in the building and where they logged out and where they were at. So if we have, if something happens when someone is in the building, we need to know that we have to take care of visitors as well. And they may not know our procedure, so we can, if it's in the guidance office or whatever, make sure that they take them out for the drill with us, whatever that might be. So this gives us an accountability for that.
I have a quick question too. Is that, is that application modifiable? And why I'm asking for is because, you know, like if, I see some of the universities have this too, like you, you, you know, before a visitor enters, they could actually say if they have been exhibiting symptoms of COVID. And so they actually, they could log it in right here too at the time that they scan their ID. Is that, is that a possibility of doing that?
There is a COVID surge down here. We've enabled that before.
That's really good. Yeah, that's awesome.
The next portion of this system through School Safe ID is a program called Smart Dismissal. This is going to be for the elementary only. What we do is any parents that are picking up students will have a little hang tag here that they can hang in their cars. And then on each bookbag of their child, they'll have the corresponding number. So as we're releasing kids, somebody in the parking lot is going to go through, look at the hang tags, say, hey, 166 is here, 132 in order. And then in the teacher's classroom, it's going to say, hey, little Johnny, your mom's here to pick you up. Little Billy, you know, your parents are here to pick you up. And then as the students walk out, we know that 166 can go with 166. You know, they forget them, we can look them up in the system, just making sure, just making sure our kids get to their car and they're all capable. So this is Houtch and this implements at the elementary and we're excited to see how it works. So the next system is more virtual. So over the summer, we implemented new filtering software for our district. Required by federal law, receiving federal money, we provide internet filtering for our kids and any school device. So now that we're, you know, basically going full one-to-one program, we provide internet filtering at home, also here in the district on the school front books. So we implemented a new filter called Lightspeed. It's really cool. It gives us a lot of data on what students are searching for, you know, what are the topics, what's getting blocked, you know, and gives us a lot more granular control over different categories. So in the past, you know, health searches will be considered adult material, you know, because you're looking up community body. Well nowadays, there's a whole separate category for educational health. So it allows kids a little more access while still being restrictive and all that. It also gives us great analytical data of what programs are being used here, what's being hit on every day, what's not being used, and we're going to use this data. And we're using this data to, uh, actually help us out this year to see, um, you know, what software we're using, you know, to its fullest potential.
No, yes, I'm, I'm just guessing it flags to like suicidal ideation, those kinds of thing, you know, like kids that are searching.
Got a keyword pickup on, yeah, and automatically kicks in a notification, kicks in a notification system.
Okay.
Like I said before, um, it's analytical data. It can sort by categories, um, of, you know, or most of the, our kids are searching for educational things, or it's more miscellaneous, or social media, YouTube. It just gives us a lot of, a lot of good data to, to do that. Now going off of, uh, what you said, um, there is a self-harm component. Basically, this is important, as important as filtering for the district. We would like to know if somebody's going to do something, um, to hurt themselves, to hurt others. We wanna know right away so we can intervene. And we had that last year, uh, but this system sort of takes it, um, up to the next level. So, uh, basically, this is an example, um, as we're testing out the system. I search for, um, you know, how do I kill myself? At this point, um, the counselors are gonna come through and get email like this, hey, there's an incident for self-harm. At that point, they have access to the system where they can go through and say, hey, I'm gonna look at this and I can see the whole history of what's going on with the student, what they're searching for, to see if that's maybe a false positive or actually a, something that we, we need to intervene in. And, uh, just by sort of going through this, and you can sort of see some different search forms that came up. And then finally, um, this is a screenshot of actually what, what I searched for and what page came up. So this, this would be a parallel threat where then we could definitely get the, the students out of class, intervene and, uh, you know, make sure they get the, the, the systems they need. So, uh, it's a really powerful solution. Uh, like we had before, it was, you know, we were getting alerts and the forum on and email chain and all that. This goes right, right to the counselors and principals, so we can intervene right away. Uh, but this is a, a huge component to, um, student safety for us for this year.
So I have a question. So like the, the filtering actually happens for the, for internet sites if they're logged into the network and inside of here, right? So that, that's what, what happens. So then, when they have a, um, so the standard set of like keywords that you block against, i- is, is there a standard set that's provided by a third party? Or do we actually establish it ourselves?
Uh, no, they have a full database of websites and keywords that they block.
But you can modify that and add according to what you're seeing here then, to that list then. So like, and that's what probably you'd use that for, right? To say, okay, there's this list of, of things that we're seeing a trend on. Maybe there's like a certain app that you have, you could block that app if it's not part of that standard list then, right?
Correct.
Okay, perfect. That's awesome.
Yeah. And this does, uh, self-harm and also, um, violence. So, you know, if you're searching for guns or knives, or how do I make a white bomb, something like that, um, it's gonna flag and, and sing system.
That's great. Does it do like drugs too? Alcohol, like, I mean, like illegal?
It, it won't alert us on that, because that's not an immediate threat. Um, but there's a separate system here where we can put keywords in, um, and, you know, but right now it's just self-harm and harming others. Um, the last piece I want to talk about is another piece of this Lightspeed software. It's called, um, Lightspeed Relay Classroom. It doesn't really deal with student safety that much, but it, it gives control to the teachers in the classrooms where each students, each student is gonna have a Chromebook this year. And so the teachers can go into the system on their class period, see what the kids are searching, uh, right then and there, lock out their screens that they're not on task, and then, um, you know, allow certain websites or disallow certain websites, all by what class period and, and what they're doing. So it's a great way to, um, just monitor everything to make sure, you know, academics is happening in the school district.
This could work a lot of times, so the teacher can have his computer up and, and know what sites the students are on, like right now when they're working in class. That keeps them from drifting off to Fortnite and other places.
So it's just another tool for, for the teachers. So lastly, um, basically going forward with student safety, um, we're working on all this. We're gonna, um, upgrade our home system, which is currently in progress. Part of that upgrade, uh, we're looking at some systems that allows us to call in to our PA system. So in event there's an active shooter, a lockdown, where maybe where you're not in the office to make the announcement, dial an extension and make the announcement to this school to all mention for a book. So that's, uh, one of the solutions we're, we're looking at. Um, of course, uh, we're implementing the E911 for Carriage Law. We're implementing, um, we'll be having, maybe the run, hide, fight, uh, but we're developing an online course for that to help train the teachers each year. Uh, we brought, uh, the safety forces in, um, was it two years ago?
Two years ago.
Um, to train our staff, where we did live drills, um, active shooter, run, hide, fight. I'm developing a, a little course right now, just each year, each staff can go through, just get a clean of the system so as that sometimes it will become second nature to run, because that's what we want to do. We don't want to set instructions, we want you to react. Should you run, should you hide, or should you fight? So I'm developing a, a course for that. Also, um, regarding safety, um, we're gonna look at the outside cameras for the front of the building, the elementary school, and see if we can get that covered. Um, you know, outside cameras do, uh, uh, you know, they're with the elements, so if it happens to break down like that, then the internal cameras would, would happen. So that's, uh, sort of our, uh, safety plan going forward. Again, you know, we're gonna comply with all of our drills and, um, management tests, but this is just sort of some of the other initiatives that we're, we're doing.
I'm sorry.
I just was gonna go back to that. Are there no cameras right now in front of the elementary school?
No, there are.
Oh, there are? They need to be upgraded?
They need to be, uh, be upgraded, yeah.
With, uh, being back in session, the seventh grade, we'll go through their safety week, like, what we have always done. During the course, uh, it's usually any OEA week where the safety forces come in and they, we break the seventh grade classes up and the fire department does how to use a fire extinguisher, uh, they do stop the bleed instruction, um, uh, they've done the run, hide, fight instruction so that the students rotate from group to group and they get to experience those. Every kid gets to pull the pin on the fire extinguisher and put the fire pin out here so they at least know how to use that. And we, by doing it at that level, as they matriculate through the high school, uh, they, they all have had that, that experience. And one other thing that the, the law will kick in this year, where we're gonna have to have threat assessment teams established in schools. And, uh, we'll have one in the high school, middle school, and one in the elementary, and that will fall into one. Uh, Chief Sturgill's already done the training on the, on the police end of it. Uh, there's a series of videos and we've already talked to some potential team members in the building, obviously counselors and, and administrative staff where some, where some of these things get picked up, um, through our filtering system might immediately go to our threat assessment team for them to take, sit and take a look at and, and determine the level of threat that it might be. So that's law, um, that's kicking in. Uh, that started about a year and a half ago and, and they passed that. And I think we have probably till the end of the school year to have it, it established, all the trainings online, um, with it right now. So we'll be working through that this year as well.
Thank you.
Okay.
Can I ask one more question?
Sure.
You know, man, I'm always asking where the, where the funds come for this. Was this something that was budgeted? Or did this come out of, um, one of those special funds that we got from the state, the wellness funds or the safety funds?
So the, the kiosks that we got in each building came out of, um, our safety grant, um, so that was completely covered through that. Um, the cameras for the building, um, came out of just permanent improvement funds, and we did all the, the work inside the district. We contracted out for that. And then, um, the, uh, internet filtering is just part of our routine maintenance, or routine software.
Perfect.
We've applied for additional safety grants and been turned down by the state. So anytime, anytime Chief Sturgill sees something, he shoots it over our way, uh, so we, we've, uh, through the course of years, we've applied for several, but, and some of these were automatic. And it was just the amount, you know, we had to fill out the paperwork, it was predetermined by the state based on this enrollment in the school. But there's, uh, anytime anything pops up, uh, Chief's real good at looking at it, Dave picks up on it. We apply for anything that we can and, and, and see what we can pick up on it and always, always look to enhance what we have here, so.
We so appreciate that, so. And it's good that we got something and we used it in a good way, because all of these things look great. These are great improvements. Next up, Mr. Mucchio.
Thank you, Mr. Schukert. Um, we have some members in the audience. I have copies on top of the hutch. If, uh, you'd like to grab one of each, so you don't follow along. I wanted to start tonight, there are a couple sheets in front of everybody here. Let's start with the big one. This is T2C.
T2C.
Yep. The top right-hand corner is gonna say T2C.
I see T2E.
Right here.
This is the real big one.
Okay.
So what this is, is this is our entire budget for all of our funds. And I just wanted to look at the general fund, which is the very top row that we have there. So, column A at the very top, the description is all of our funds. So general fund, permanent improvement, food service, uniform school supplies, special trust, endowment, and so forth. But again, we're just looking at the row of general fund at this moment. So, column B, beginning cash. So we started fiscal year 2021 with that blue figure of $14,799,534.23. Now, column C would be the encumbrances from the prior year, fiscal 2020. So that just means that we had open purchase orders that we didn't close out, that we were to pay in fiscal 2021, this fiscal year. And then, column D is the unencumbered cash, so we're just taking B minus C equals D. So we're just subtracting those encumbrances to get our unencumbered cash balance. E, F, G, H, I, J, K, and L are our certificates of estimated resources for fiscal year 2021. So what happens is, we estimate what our revenues are and we turn that into Cuyahoga County. We have to, by law. So, column E, that figure is done by the county. So the county comes and they estimate what our anticipated revenue is for the general fund. Now, if we look all the way down, column E, to the gray, we can see a date, 4/29/2020. That's when that was done, by the county. So back in April 2020. Column F is our temporary certificate of estimated resources, which was done 6/24/2020. So that's our temporary budget for the fiscal year that we have. It's 14,645,005.06. G is our original, our starting point that we had. And we did this back in September, uh, 2020, September 23rd. And we bumped it up, uh, about 300 some thousand. And if we see there's a little A next to it, and that A goes all the way down below to that little box. So that's kind of how the tick marks work on this sheet. There's always a letter behind, uh, one of those colors, the yellow, and it just has a little description so we can all kind of follow along why each one of them was adjusted every course of the way. Column H is amendment number four, and there was another movement. And we can see the reason for that movement was to match revenue with the November 2020 five-year forecast. And that was done 11/18/2020. Column I, we, uh, adjusted again. Column J, we did not adjust, but we adjusted some other funds that we have there. Column K, we did adjust the general fund, and we did that 4/7/2021. And then our final adjustment for the year is amendment number eight, and we did not adjust the general fund. So the ending number is $16,782,025. So that's what we're saying, we estimated our revenues were gonna be for the general fund. Now, column M is the total revenue for fiscal year 2021. So this is actual, so this is what came in. We can see that we actually received $16,906,308 and change. So we received a little more than what we estimated, which is good. Column N, O, P, Q, R, S, T are our appropriations for fiscal year 2021. So we can see our temporary appropriations, uh, for fiscal year 2021 is $170,307,009. And again, if we go all the way down below, we can see that we approved it 6/24/2020, and that was under resolution 57/2020. Then we can see our original amendment number one. We didn't change for the general fund, still at $170,307,000. And that was approved, um, that appropriation amendment was approved 9/23/2020. Again, we changed the permanent improvement fund and a couple funds below in the special revenue category. In column P, we adjusted the general fund, uh, up, or excuse me, down to $17,112,784. And again, letter A, if we look down below, that was to match expenses with the November 2020 five-year forecast. And again, we approved that, uh, appropriation amendment back on 11/18/2020 under resolution 104-2020. And then we didn't change appropriations in the general fund, um, at all for the remaining portion of fiscal year. We kept it at that $17,112,784. So columns Q, R, S, T deal with appropriation adjustments for other funds, but not the general fund that we have. So our final, um, appropriation resolution, which is column T, which was approved 5/26/2021 and resolution 47-2021. The amount is $17,112,784. And we can see column U, which is our actual expenditures for fiscal year 2021 from the general fund, is $15,727,865 and change. So we were well under our appropriations that we had. We can see our ending cash in column B. So we're looking at taking column B, the blue amount, adding column M, which is our total revenue, subtracting column U, which is our total expenses, and that gets us our ending cash at $15,977,009.77 and 27 cents, which is that red number that we have. Then we have column W, which is our current year encumbrances, $78,000. So that's open POs that we didn't close in this fiscal year that we have to pay, or maybe we're gonna close out because we didn't order those. And then our ending unencumbered cash is $15,899,946.3. So we had a surplus this year of $1,178,443.04. And we're just taking our total revenues of $16,906,000, subtracting our total expenditures of $15,727,000, and that gets us our surplus.
Where, where is the surplus on here?
It's not on here.
It's, it's actually, it's, will be, um, it'll be, um, let's see, V minus B, pretty much.
So we're taking...
I just wanted to write down the, the amount again.
It's, um, it's on our, it's on the presentation box two of Board Docs, if you were to click there.
Oh, I see it now. Thank you.
Yep, so 3B has it, yep.
I see it. Thank you.
Yeah, so we're just taking the total of column M, which is $16,906,308, and subtracting $15,727,865, which is the total from column U, our total expenditures, and that gets us our surplus. So, as we were looking at our five-year forecast from November and May, again, it was, uh, the COVID year that we were dealing with. We're very conservative in our five-year forecast, and we had initially forecasted, I believe, a deficit of about $300 some thousand dollars. So we didn't have a deficit in fiscal '21. We've always been, you know, watching every step of the way, our account balances that we have. And we ended up with a surplus to the tune of $1.1 million approximately.
So where we estimated, which is, which is gonna be a deficit of 300, and actually then now we get a surplus, it's like a 1.5 swing, right? So, so that, that's, like you said, partially, or part of that is probably the conservative nature of the budget, right? So that, that's built into the process. That's good.
Yes.
But then, like, how much of that is, is related to the, I mean, this was an unusual year. So like, I mean, so in, in a usual year, like, what would the expenses be increased by normally in comparison to last year? I, I don't have to have that answer right now, but I mean...
Right. And we can measure that against the five-year forecast.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, yeah.
Right, the five-year forecast, and we're pretty close to, so there's nothing out of the ordinary, um, too much. So we're in the same ballpark as we were. Now, one more thing about this sheet, and then we're gonna go on to another one. If we look at, um, the supporting documentation, which is a gray bar towards the middle. So, in column B, if we look all the way at the bottom, we can see that total is $18,495,975.04. So that's the total of all of our funds that we had. And if we look at column V, which is our ending cash, in that same row, we can see our ending for total of all the funds is $20,193,246.68, which means if we subtract 20 million from the 18 million, um, comes to an approximate $1.7 million surplus overall for all of our funds. So we just looked at our general fund and we had about a $1.1 million surplus. If we look at all of our funds, we have a $1.7 million surplus. So our fund balance increased from $18.5 million beginning the year to ending at $20.2 million that we have.
That's really good.
So overall, we're healthy, not just in the general fund, but across all of our funds that we have.
That would be the, oh, sorry. That'd be the interesting thing, is look at the budget and how that effect has on the, the future years then too. Because I mean, that, that surplus is, is significant. I mean, it really is.
It pushes the five-year forecast.
It's, it's, it's gonna pitch it way. I mean, it's gonna, yeah, for sure.
Yeah, it's gonna materially, um, affect the five-year forecast when we work on it, uh, come this November. And it's gonna have a more positive outlook, which is good.
That's really good.
Uh, but again, COVID's, you know, still here.
I understand.
Not sure. Again, we're conservative. Not sure. Again, we're conservative overall, but we ended fiscal year two thousand twenty-one in a very healthy spot, not just the general fund, but overall.
And that's okay, because conservative is like the worst-case scenario, you know, really. I mean, so, so I mean, that's what you're planning for, and that, that works out really well that way. So I mean, you're always not surprising us in the wrong direction, let's put it that way.
Right.
So, it's very good.
Remember, we got different, we got money that we never got before because of COVID.
Yep. And we'll talk about that, too, later on. Yep. Let's look at T two D, which is our general fund lead sheet. So it's a little smaller sheet that we have here. So this is our lead sheet for the general fund, and this is what we track every, you know, board meeting when we close our books. And again, this is just the general fund that we have here. And our starting number in blue in column B, row one, is that fourteen million, seven hundred ninety-nine thousand, five thirty-four, that we were looking at the other sheet. So that's our beginning balance for the year. The unique thing about this spreadsheet is it expands all of our line items for revenue, so we can see them in more detail. So, row two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, and twelve are all revenue rows that we have. And if we look at our total column in column N, and again, everything's separated by month that we have here, we can see that general property taxes, we brought in nine million, two hundred ninety-five thousand, six eighty-two. Below that, tangible personal property, two million, seven hundred sixty-one thousand, one sixty-six. Below that is our unrestricted aid, seven hundred thirty-three thousand, six ninety-one. Below that's our restricted state aid at one hundred thirty-four thousand, eight ninety-four. Below that's our property tax allocation at two million, three hundred seventy-eight thousand, six twenty-four. Below that, seventy-six. Below that, we have our, all their financing sources at two hundred seventy thousand, five seventy-six, which totals up to sixteen million, nine hundred six thousand, three hundred ninety dollars, which again, is that total from column M on the previous sheet that we were looking at for total revenue. So this just expands it by all the different line items that we have. And these are the five-year forecast line items. And again, online, if we wanted to look at any of those sheets, they're broken out in more detail. We actually have two sheets to look at. Same with expenses. If we look at our expenses, rows fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine are all expenditure rows. So if we look at column N, again, we can see our total for personnel services is eight million, four hundred fifty-four thousand, nine hundred seven dollars. We can see our total for employees' retirement insurance benefits is three million, one hundred eighty-five thousand, nine hundred forty-six dollars. For purchased services, it's three million, seventy-two thousand, three hundred ninety-nine dollars. For supplies and materials, it's four hundred seventy-two thousand, one sixty-one. For capital outlay, it's one hundred nineteen thousand, seven sixty-six. For other objects, it's two hundred nineteen thousand, six eighty-six. For operational transfers out, it's a hundred seventy-five thousand, and advances out is twenty-eight thousand, which totals up to fifteen million, seven hundred twenty-seven thousand, eight sixty-five, which is online U of the previous sheet that we had for expenditures. And then we have our amount below in red, which is fifteen million, nine hundred seventy-seven thousand, nine seventy-eight rounding, which matches the other sheet that we have in column V, earning cash. We can see in the column O, the allocation, you know, the different proportions that we have for these amounts. You know, what percentage of the overall total it is. We can see that our personnel services is fifty-four percent of our total expenses from the general fund. Employees' retirement insurance benefits accounts for twenty percent, and purchased services accounts for twenty percent. Same with revenue. If we look at our property taxes, fifty-five percent. For tangible personal property tax, sixteen percent. For property tax allocation, that's fourteen percent. If we look at our unrestricted grants and aid, that's four percent. So that's the amount that we get from the state. So the revenue in our general fund that we get from state aid only amounts to four percent of our general fund revenue. So it makes up a very, very small amount that we get from the state, when we really expand everything.
It's the old funding formula. It really wasn't a formula.
If we look at columns P, Q, R, and S, these are the beginning budget, ending budget, and then in between is the May and November five-year forecast. So we can kind of track, you know, from our beginning budget to the November forecast, then to the May forecast, and then finally to our ending budget, just how we kind of went along. And the beginning budget, you know, we were very conservative because COVID was coming into play around this time last year when we were working on our initial budget. Then we were looking at it more favorably in November, but still very conservative at the same time. Then in May, two thousand twenty-one, we adjusted and had more of a positive outlook for revenue, and our ending budget stayed the same with that. And we can see, if we compare our ending budget to our totals, you know, just how we aligned up between each. And again, we came in actuals a little higher than what we were planning for the budget. And if we look at our expenditures, we came in under budget every line item that we had. So if we look at personnel services, the budget was eight million, seven hundred six thousand, seven twenty-four in column P, which is the ending budget, and we came in actuals at eight point four million. If we look at employee retirement insurance benefits in column P, the green, it was three million, three hundred eighty-nine thousand. We came in three point one million, so under there. For purchased services, in green, it was three point six million. We came in at approximately three million. For supplies and materials, seven hundred sixty-five thousand. We came in at four hundred seventy-two thousand. So every one of those line items, we were tracking under budget. We knew that essentially every step of the way. So, you know, we appropriate a certain amount, reasonable amount, and again, all those amounts tie to the five-year forecast that we have in here. And we break down the five-year forecast very much in depth. So, and again, any one of these line items, we have support in these sheets. And I actually have two sheets printed here that I just wanted to talk about. The two most significant ones are tax revenue and personnel services. So the tax revenue is T two E.
E's in Edward?
Yes. Yep. Now, if we look at this sheet, and we look at rows one through seven, which are in blue, this is our general property tax. So that total is nine million, two hundred ninety-five thousand, six eighty-two that we brought in. We can see our estimate in orange, total of two million, I'm on row seven, two million, excuse me, nine million, two hundred seventy-nine thousand, seven hundred eighty dollars. So we brought in essentially a hundred percent of what we were estimating, a little more than that, actually. And we can see by the different rows, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, what the estimate was and what the actuals came in at. So again, we came in about fifteen thousand dollars higher than what we estimated. In row eight, and before I jump to row eight, down below, we have definitions for everything here. So we have the settlement information for all those settlements, and it's color-coded, too. We want to track those for those quick definitions. For row eight, tangible personal property, that's our public utility personal property. So that's our railroads, electric, and natural gas companies, waterworks companies that we have. And we brought in essentially a hundred percent of what we estimated for the year. In green, we have our property tax allocation, which is the homestead and rollbacks. And then we have row twelve, which is the reimbursement for the TPP phase-out that we have. So we know that that amount is getting phased out by about two hundred some thousand dollars every year. And we can see that that came in, you know, right on mark, one point nine million dollars that we had. So, overall, we were, you know, tracking it along the way, and our actuals came just a little higher than what our estimates were, as we watched it.
I think, just one add, when we talked about, we were very uncertain about what the collection rate was going to be this year, knowing in the COVID, not knowing that a lot of families were under financial duress. And, and I, the number there is ninety-seven point two nine. I think originally Matt estimated it a much lower collection percentage because, just to play it on the safe side, we weren't certain. Our collection rates have been very good the last few years. There was, prior to that, there were, I think, maybe low nineties, even in the high eighties for a few years, but recently, they've been very good for us, so.
That's a really good correct collection rate for COVID, really good.
Yeah, it's, and, you know, COVID still exists, so, you know, we're going to probably have a forecast that is conservative as well with the tracking of the revenue. But yeah, as Mr. Evans was saying, we, you know, very fortunate.
When we estimated at like, high eighties, was it somewhere around there? Wasn't that part of the budget, if I remember right?
Yeah, I think this wasn't an accurate barometer, to be honest.
Yeah, it's tough. But what I'm saying, though, that, like, this is way favorable.
Correct.
That's really good.
Correct. And that, that's when, you know, ESER one was just coming down, but we didn't know about ESER two and three. We didn't know how the market was going to handle. We didn't know what the shutdowns were going to do, the lockdowns, if there were going to be more lockdowns.
Really good.
Lot of, right.
That's awesome.
Yep. So just wanted to show how this spreadsheet just kind of tracks all those individual items that we have. And then if we look at T two H, this is our personnel services sheet, salaries for people of the school district. We have everything broken out here by object code on the bottom half of the sheet, certified, non-certified. And then the top, couple rows, the top five, are just our different payrolls that we have. So either we have three payroll months, or the majority two. So in July and January, we had three payroll months, and all others, we had two payrolls that we had. Our salaries for row one in the middle, object code one eleven, our total is five million, seven hundred forty-seven thousand, nine thirty-one, and our budget was five million, seven hundred seventy-four thousand, five ninety-one. So we hit ninety-nine point five percent of our budget that we had. And if we look at our budget column percentage, nothing's over a hundred percent. So we've been tracking that along the way, just to make sure that we stay within our budget. And our actuals, row twenty-four, all the way at the bottom, came in at eight million, four hundred fifty-four thousand, nine oh eight, which is ninety-seven point one percent of the budget, which is eight million, seven hundred six thousand, seven hundred twenty-four dollars. You know, I wanted to point out, row eight, severance termination. These are our severance payments that we have for object code one thirty-two, and that total is about a hundred and eleven thousand, a hundred and ten thousand. Those are the retirement severance payouts to teacher Judy Harvin, Nancy Winierka, and Dan Durazio. So they retire, and then we pay the severance, and now, you know, we fully recognize the savings by hiring new teachers coming in with teachers retiring. So now, in fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, we've already paid off the severance. We have those new teachers, and this is the year when we'll fully recognize that savings that we have. And then we have teachers retiring just recently, Mr. Amari, Mr. Sokol, Mrs. Seitz. And then we'll do the same. We'll pay the severance, and then fully recognize in that following fiscal year the savings that we have for those teachers, too.
Is the severance paid all in one lump sum?
Yes.
Over a period of time?
They have an option.
They have an option?
Yeah. I think most of them should probably choose to roll it into a four oh three B and add.
That's really good. I mean, what a, what a financial year. Congratulations to both of you. They're managing the funds and accounting for them. It's really, it's really a good year.
Yeah, we had a favorable year overall. And the last spreadsheet I just wanted to highlight was grants. So the last large sheet that we have is T two Y, and this deals with our grants. So these are non-general fund funds. So the top half is fiscal year two thousand twenty, and we only had three grants in our typical year. So we have Title I, Title II A, and Title IV A. That's a typical year in two thousand twenty. But then COVID happened, and we got more grants. So fiscal year two thousand twenty-one's the bottom half of the spreadsheet. And we can see, the first grant that we have there is the CARES Act ESER grant in orange, and that grant amount is sixty-one thousand, thirty-four dollars and forty-one cents. And we can see all the expenses that we had. So we spent three thousand, two hundred in August, eighteen thousand, nine hundred September. We spent nineteen thousand, seven hundred thirty-two dollars in October. And then we did a reimbursement request for those four, three months, forty-two thousand, one dollar and fifty-eight cents. Then we spent five thousand, one forty-one in November. We did a reimbursement request for those funds. Then we spent nine hundred fifty-four in December, and eight thousand, three fifty-nine in January. We did a reimbursement request for nine thousand, three thirteen. And we spent in February, four thousand, five seventy-seven oh six, and we did a reimbursement request for that amount in February. So we had spent all sixty-one thousand, thirty-four dollars and forty-one cents, and we did a reimbursement for the total amount. So that grant's completely closed out. That is ESER one. So ESER one, again, we completely closed out back in February. We didn't spend any ESER two or ESER three funds in fiscal two thousand twenty-one. We're set to spend ESER two in this year, fiscal twenty-two. And we'll talk about those more as we go along.
Yeah, roughly, how much are we getting in those ESER two?
ESER three is seven hundred fifty thousand, and ESER two, it's about two hundred, three hundred thousand. I'll have to look at exactly what that is, but, yep.
Two ninety-one, huh?
Yeah, two ninety-one, yep. Two hundred, yep. About three hundred thousand for ESER two, and about seven hundred fifty thousand for ESER three, approximately.
Million in total, around, also.
Yeah, we're, yeah, about a million dollars in total for all of our government ESER funds that we have.
That's really good.
The grant below, the coronavirus relief, which is the dark green, that is thirty-seven thousand, eight hundred nineteen dollars and one penny. And we spent that all in December, and we did a reimbursement request by December. And again, December was the cutoff initially that they had, so that's why we spent and did the reimbursement request. And then the government came back and said, oh, we're going to extend this for another year. So we met the initial requirement to spend it by December, two thousand twenty, and then they extended it until December of two thousand twenty-one. So we met the first requirement. We can see that there's no balance in that account, so we've spent that grant, and we're completely done with that. And we purchased a number of Chromebooks with that. I want to say maybe approximately two hundred Chromebooks with that coronavirus relief fund grant that we had, thirty-seven thousand. Below that, in blue, we have a, our broadband Ohio connectivity grant, which was two thousand dollars. And we had spent all of the two thousand dollars. We spent a hundred ninety-three in October, got that reimbursement request. In March, four hundred, got the four hundred dollar reimbursement request. Then in April and May, we spent four hundred and four hundred for an eight hundred dollar reimbursement request. In June, we spent six hundred, six dollars and seventy cents. But since ODE has to close their books, they freeze everything, and you can't get reimbursements from the state anymore, because they have to close their books. So that's why we have to do an advance. So we had those four advances. We can't end our funds with a negative, essentially, as a presentation on our GAAP financial statements. So that's the only reason why we have to do an advance. So we're just advancing funds from the general fund over to these grant funds, just to show that these aren't negative accounts. And then we advance the money back in. It's only for presentation purposes, so, it's just a little extra work, you know, clicking the buttons and everything. But that's why we see the thousand dollars down there, and that's why we have our positive balance of three hundred ninety-three dollars and thirty cents. But again, we're going to do the reimbursement request for the six hundred, six dollars and seventy cents, and we're going to advance back to the general fund, and then that completely closes that grant out that we have for the broadband. Below, we have our Title I. That amount was ninety-five thousand, seven eighty-two and ninety cents. We can see as we spent along the way, again, we had a advance in because we couldn't do a reimbursement request in June. And we didn't spend all of it. We spent about ninety-one percent, and the remaining nine percent is going to be carried over into fiscal year two thousand twenty-two. So we don't lose the funds that we didn't spend out of that grant, but rather, it's going to carry over. And it's a unique thing about Title I, where you have to spend eighty-five percent of that grant, and if you don't, you have to apply for a waiver for anything under that to have that carry over. So anything over eighty-five percent, you automatically carry over into the next fiscal year. But if you spend under eighty-five percent, you have to apply for a waiver for the carryover. So it gets a little hectic trying to spend eighty-five percent from Title I. But, you know, it's, but we hit that mark, we're at ninety-one, and we're good going forward. The next grant we have is the expanding opportunities for each child. That was one thousand, six hundred eighty-one dollars, twenty-nine cents. We're still working on spending that in fiscal year two thousand twenty-two. So we're devising ideas how we want to spend that small one thousand, six hundred dollar grant that we have. But, yeah. Title II A, twenty-five thousand, six hundred sixty-eight dollars and twenty-three cents. We spent twenty-one thousand, seven seventeen and forty cents, which is about eighty-five percent of that grant. We're going to have the remaining portion carry over. Title I's the only one with that fixed eighty-five percent amount. Every other grant, if you don't spend it, carries over. It's weird how the department does that. But I think the Department of Education wants you to really spend title funds every year. They don't want you to amass carryovers. Title II A, we are going to carry over that unspent portion in fiscal twenty-two that we have going forward. And Title IV, which is the last grant that we have, which was twelve thousand, one hundred eighty-one dollars and twenty-six cents, we spent seven thousand, seven hundred ninety-seven dollars and seventeen cents. So it's about sixty-four percent spent, and the remaining portion unspent will carry over to the future fiscal year.
Mr. Mucho, thank you for that presentation. I have one question, kind of go-avoid about the source of the, the ultimate source of the funds for the grants
Yes.
that are on this page. Are, are most of these funds derived from the federal government in some way, as opposed to the state government? So it's kind of literally our tax dollars at work, or federal tax dollars at work?
Yes, that is correct. All of these are Fund 500. So in the CARES Act, that's Fund 507 dash nine nine two one, below, 510 dash nine nine two one. So all of these are either a 507, 510, 572, 590, or 599 fund. Any fund that starts with a five, a 500 fund is a federal
Okay.
fund. So that's coming from the federal coming from the federal government. Any funds that start with a 400 are state grants that we have. So the, Mr. Wallace was talking about the Office of the Attorney General, which was helping out with some of these safety initiatives that we have. That would be a state grant. So the State Attorney General of Ohio is giving those grants out, so we mark that in a 400 fund. Any federal grants that we have, we have to account for them in a 500 grant level. So any 500 grants are federal grants now. Yep.
Good, thank you.
And if there's any questions, that concludes my presentation. We had a favorable year. We're spending our CARES Act money, our ESER money, and we'll talk about that in our future board meetings. Our grants, you know, we're closing those out, and any unexpended amounts we have going into the future years that we have. And, you know, we're healthy overall with all of our funds.
Good news.
Thank you.
Do you have some questions? So all that grant money was about $250,000 from the feds, and you're anticipating an ESER in about that amount just for that?
Yeah, we get, we have three ESERS. So this is ESER I here. We get other funds from the federal government, which aren't necessarily related to COVID-19. So typically, we get Title I, Title II-A, and Title IV. So those are our typical ones that we get. But our ESER I, which was $61,000, that was specifically for COVID. For our Coronavirus Relief, that was $37,000. So think about $100,000 that we got in this fiscal year, fiscal year 2021 for COVID-19. We have ESER II, which is about $300,000, which we have not spent yet in fiscal '21. We're going to spend it in this fiscal year, which is fiscal 2022. Then on top of ESER II, there's an ESER III, which we got $750,000 approximately. So we have approximately $1 million in ESER II and III, which we have yet to spend, given for COVID, which we have a plan in place to spend that.
And we'll fall within the timeframes that the federal government sets out there because we have to spend them by September, like the one by September of next year, and the other one, we've got a two-year window to spend that on. So we have to, we have to, Mr. Young, Mr. Muccio, and I sit down with a spreadsheet, a state spreadsheet, and we enter into what columns that we're going to request that money be spent in, and then they have to approve it. And then we come back through the board approval process of how we're going to spend it. And then we go through, and then they reimburse us that to the fact for that, so.
It's also very specific. Can't you just be spent on, it has to be, like, for example, ESER III, 20% has to be spent on learning loss. Whatever that looks like, it has to be learning loss, the minimum 20%.
And for us, that was, learning loss dealt with, bringing on additional teachers in the elementary to reduce some class sizes, to give some more individualized instruction. That's part of where that is. We could also, a big part of this, and you've probably seen it in the news with ESER III, has been your air filtration system. So what it's going to allow us to do is allow us to add air conditioning to the last seven rooms in the elementary building. We're going to, it's going to fall within that. The problem with that is everybody in the state has the same money. So there's 612 school districts right now that want to add air conditioning. So we're trying to lock our group in so that as soon as school's out next summer, they come in here and we finish off those seven rooms. And then every classroom in the elementary building will be air conditioned.
And I have one more question.
Yeah, sure.
So you told us, I believe, that in our general fund, about 4% comes from the state.
Yes.
Do you know what percentage of our general fund comes from the federal government?
I'd have to look closer at that. Now, I know we have our 500-level funds that are grants from the federal government, but I'll have to look a little closer to see if there's any pass-through money coming from the federal government going to our state government, and in turn, coming to us flowing.
Or even if it was just...
The title grants are primarily federal government, and that's the reading and economically disadvantaged students. And those are minimal. Those are, we're less, probably in that 3% or 4% range at a max. And those are the one, those are the consistent grants. ESER is due to, all those grants are due to COVID. So those are things that wouldn't normally be there. But the consistent grants that we've had have been the Title I, Title II-A, and those grants.
I'm just curious. If at some point you can figure that out, since you figured it out for the state, I was just curious.
Yep.
You know, because people always want to know, well, you know, our taxes pay for this, our taxes pay for this.
Well, I had somebody had sent me an email that, to the effect that we were going to lose federal funds if we didn't do something. I don't remember what it was. And I said, I understand that we only get, only about 2% of our budget is federal funds, and it's identified in grant areas. So it's very specific. Some of it's for special needs students. So it's very, very specific, so.
Yeah, unrestricted grants and aid, which amounts to about 4% that we get, is primarily funded through our state taxes that we have. But there could be a small portion of federal taxes that kind of pass through ODE, which comes back to us. But I'll definitely look at that. But primarily, the majority is state taxes.
And just a little history lesson, that when the, our founding fathers set up government, they purposely didn't fund schools on the federal level. They left that to the states. That was the responsibility of states. And I think one of the big arguments over the last 25 or 30 years is that the feds have stuck their nose in where they, depending on who you talk to...
Didn't fund.
Were supposed to, by our founding fathers, essentially. So that's a, you know, so that, there's a lot, there's a lot of misconceptions about where that money's coming from. Because when the Constitution was formed, there was, there was no caveat. There was no Secretary of Education. There was no, with the poor education, that was left to each individual state to establish. And, which leads to a lot of discussions you have, because what happens in Ohio is very, very different than what happens in Pennsylvania, and Michigan, and other states. So some fund off a sales tax, some fund off, as we do, property taxes in Ohio. So it's a very diff, it's not uniform across the country. And, you know, Pennsylvania has no sale tax, sales tax, so they don't, they're not, their state isn't generating any money. None of that's coming back to schools. So it's all very, very different. So it's, it's sometimes a, when you get together with educators from out of state, the funding sources are, the funding streams are very different.
Very interesting.
And part of what the discussion, as we well know, is the high reliance on property taxes in Ohio. That's been a burr for a lot of property owners. You know, they get, just keep getting hammered, and that's the only, you know, the only source of those funds.
Not here.
No.
Could be in Rexville.
Right, or Shaker Heights.
Yeah, right.
All right, we're going to roll right into...
Thank you, Matt. Thank you. Great presentation.
Comments from the public? We have, you know, Mr. James A. Number one. I think that's, is that the microphone?
That is, yeah. Just want to stand behind the podium.
Just so it picks up. We record the meetings that way, yeah.
So I wanted to say, first, almost, thank you all. I don't know how you manage all those numbers so well. You didn't even trip over anything. You just went right through them all. It was impressive. I came here tonight because, well, mainly because there was banned parents meeting going on, and then I happened to discover there was a school board meeting. So I said, hey, let me pop in. And I wanted, I want to apologize for not coming to more of these. You guys show up here every month, and you do your thing. And we're, as a community, we're very quick to complain about you guys doing things, and yet, we're not here. So I urge everybody in our community to step up and start coming to these, as I'm going to try to. And I know we all have very busy lives. The more kids you have, the busier your life is. And, you know, we keep, they keep us busy, but we do need to start making sure that we come here, even if we have to sit through financials. Just kidding. It was, it was very informative. But my main reason for wanting to talk is, I'm sure as you guys are going, you know, we're going back to school, and things are going crazy in our world again. CDC's recommending different things, and, you know, everybody's chirping and chiming in with their opinions on things. I'm sure that the subject of masks is going to be a topic, and I want to urge that you guys, as a school board, stick with, you know, letting it be parents' choice. I mean, you know, we're at a point where the vaccine is available to everybody who wants to get the vaccine. I believe the number's something like 57% of the population has been vaccinated at this point. To require our kids to sit in class all day long with masks on their faces is a little ridiculous, in my opinion. You know, it's, it's having, you know, there's studies going on all over saying, you know, the emotional and, and, you know, different effects it's having on our children to have to wear masks all day long, everywhere we go. You know, we're, I saw some seeing people wearing masks, I'm seeing people not wearing masks. Nothing against anyone who wants to wear a mask. That is your right. You know, we are a free country. We're supposed to have the right to make those decisions. And if you want to protect yourself, or if you're worried about this, that's great. Wear the mask, protect yourself. But to force our children to have to wear them all day in classrooms, in classrooms where we don't have air conditioning at that, is, to me, it's unacceptable. So that is my piece. I would like to, you know, again, strongly urge you guys to steer clear of that, and let the public have their, or let the parents have their choice on what they do. All right? Thank you.
Thank you.
I forward each of the board members. Jamie had sent me some statistics, so he got a text message or an email from me that he had forwarded me some, some numbers, and I forward them out to each of you, so.
I've got lots more, too, so.
Thank you. Phil Nicholas, you sure you're out of here?
Yeah, wait, no, didn't I?
Oh, you did. I didn't hear my reading. I was looking at that. Sorry about that. Do you want to say anything? I mean...
Thanks.
Phil doesn't need his own moment. He shines in whenever he has to.
No, I think everybody here knows how I felt about the whole thing, right? So we don't need to go over it again.
No. And I've been asked to read an email from a parent.
Okay.
And this is from Dr. Lisa Lawrence. And she said, "Mr. Evans, I believe the recommendations for maskings need to be enforced. That is mandated to provide better protection for our unvaccinated children. Cleveland Public Schools, as well as those in Akron and Columbus, are mandating mask. COVID cases among children increased by 84% the last week of July. Rising COVID cases are causing districts to mandate masks and go virtual in other states. Safety should trump people's dislike of wearing masks. I hope you will revise school policy and require masks to be worn by all, by the start of the school. You respectfully, Lisa Lawrence." So I told her that I would read that in the public section comments tonight, so.
Is she a medical doctor?
Uh, yeah, she's, yes. I don't, I'm not sure what the, she's a doctor. I don't know what area.
Can I ask if there, does that cite any?
No, I just read your verbatim what she, what she...
There's no data behind where she got those.
I'm just, no, I'm just reading what the email she sent was.
You guys are making a decision tonight about that, or clarifying how we're going forward tonight, or is that...
I think there's going to be, at least my thought was we'd have a discussion about it, but it probably won't be until maybe superintendent's comments.
Right.
Or it could be board...
I was going to initiate during my comment section, because I've given them a spreadsheet with schools that have reported on a spreadsheet what they're doing. So just to give them as, because one of the charges the board gave me is they want to know what other districts in the county and around us were doing, so.
I would say, though, honestly, I mean, school starts on Wednesday. So, and there's no board meeting before. So I think if there is going to be a change, it needs to be discussed. I don't, I don't know that it has to be a vote, because, you know, everything else that has come out, there's been consensus, but it's not like we voted to say, like, in the Tom Talks, what came out. It wasn't, that was never like a vote, if that makes sense, is what I'm trying to say. Okay. Can we move, I don't know if this is right or not. Is it appropriate to switch things around, to have that conversation, because we're coming off of comments from that, or is that...
You can move the agenda however you want to. If you want to jump down to superintendent's.
Is that okay to do that?
I'm fine with that. Matt, are you okay with that?
Are you okay to take a break?
Absolutely.
Okay. Just because it's, it's here. It's like the elephant in the room. So, so Mr., do you want to do your business first, and then go to your comments?
No, I'll go right to the comments, and then we can circle back around.
Okay.
The businesses, consent agenda stuff. So I handed out a couple items to you. The first was the quarantine guidelines after exposure in K-12 classrooms. And this is, this came out from the Ohio Department of Health just this week. These were revised this week. So these are the guidelines that we, that we, you know, work on, work under, refers to students masked versus not masked, students that have been vaccinated versus non-vaccinated. Essentially, it says that any student that is masked would not be subject to quarantining. If, so if I have, if, if, if that's my classroom right there, and Mr. Sane tests positive, and the person sitting on either side of him has been wearing their mask, then they don't get quarantined, if they've been wearing a mask, or if they've been vaccinated. If they haven't been, then there's a protocol that we have to go back to and follow. So that's, that's the long and the short of what the Ohio Department of Health has sent out in that regard. I gave you a spreadsheet with, and this is an active spreadsheet. I just printed this off before I came up here with, this is through our leadership group, and this has the different districts that have reported in to this point in time. And you can see there that Olmsted Falls is optional for everybody 12 and up, and 12 and under, they're mandatory, but parents can opt out. Bedford, masks are required. James A. Garfield masks are recommended, not required. Kinston, required. Fairview, required. Brooklyn City Schools, mask recommended, not required. Lakewood, mask required. Bay Village is going to, they're required, but they're going to look at it every two weeks. Beechwood, universal masking. Cogah Heights, we recommended masks. Wickliffe, mask are required for all. Berea, recommended but not required. Mayfield, recommended but not required. Independence, recommended. Cleveland, all students and visitors will be in masks. Parma, recommended, not required. Streetsboro, recommended, not required. Barberton, recommended, not required. And Brexville, strongly recommended, not required. And I will add to that, North Royalton, because I'm in contact with the North Royalton, Brexville, Independence, and Brooklyn Superintendent Daley, and we are all on the same page to this point, that we have all strongly recommended that the students wear masks, but the masks are optional. All five districts are at the same point as of about 2:30 today.
Are you still, this is just a side note, are you still meeting with, was it the County Board of Health, like, on Fridays?
Yeah, we met with them last Friday.
So is it still like a weekly thing that...
They're, they're, they're not on this Friday, but the superintendents are going to meet because this has been changing. So the County Board of Health will not be on this Friday. Jen Dodd just sent it out. They went to one every other week with them.
How convenient that they just don't come on every school.
We spent an hour and a half on the phone last week. It was right after the governor's, governor's press conference. And I think it noted that the governor talked about vaccination, 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 steered clear of the whole masking requirement. And I think that, quite honestly, and I, I'll say this publicly, that, that the legislation has given themselves the power to overturn a masking requirement, which is why I'm certain that the Ohio Department of Health and the governor have not mandated it, because they know that the legislature will then overturn their mandate. They gave themselves, in the last General Assembly, they gave themselves the power to do that. So I think that's a clear message to the governor that they don't want him to mandate it. And he didn't, he hasn't. So he just talked about, his hour-long conference was just about vaccination and trying to get more vaccinations, so. And I put that in our, ours, the Tom Talks as well. We're still encouraging vaccinations. We will, CBS has approached us. When the 11 and under vaccination is available, we, we have volunteered to be a site. We will be given, Mr. Young has arranged for flu shots for our staff coming up in September, but also, we'll open back up for any, any staff or community members that, that want a COVID vaccination, that we will be a site here. It's free of charge. They can come in, so we'll advertise that as well. So we're just trying to provide opportunities for people that if they want to. And I know that there's some people that have, have had a change of heart about it, and we just want to make sure that they're available. And people don't need to search those out if that's, if they want to do that, so.
They'll be available to the students that it applies to as well.
Correct.
Okay, because right now, there's the students up 12 and 18.
We took busloads of students, Independence offered it last spring. So we took students with parental permission slips that, that wanted to be vaccinated for 12 and older down to Independence. I know a lot of people, parents, got vaccinated outside of that because there were some other clinics that were open outside. So, you know, we're not keeping a record. We're not tracking that. I'm kind of cautious of HIPAA laws on, on those types of things. So really not going down that rabbit hole. But we just want to make it available for anybody that wants to, wants to do that.
It's available out there right now.
It is, but, yeah.
A lot more accessible than it was at the very beginning, so.
So, Mr. Evans, you're, you've clearly got a pulse for this. You're keeping on top of it and keeping us informed, both the community and the board. So in, in the last few weeks, can you kind of just summarize what the general trend or direction has been toward the masking policies within schools, that is?
Some of them have flip-flopped. Kinston was originally, Lake County did a 180. You know, at one point in time, Lake County was not even going to wear masks on buses. They were going to disregard the, the federal guidelines. They were going to disregard the, the federal guidelines. And then last Friday, I was on with one of the superintendents, and their county health department came out and did a turnaround and put it all back on the schools. And as a matter of fact, their, their health, one of the problems is the health departments don't agree, they don't talk to each other about this. And what's going on in Colliery County is different than it's going on in Lake County and in Lorain County, and so there's, so they have even, the Lake County, County Health Department has even told the schools that they're not going to contact trace anymore, that the contact tracing has to be done by the schools because they were told by their legal counsel that's a liability for them. Well, if it's a legal counsel for the health department to contact trace, it's got to be, it's got to be a liability for a school to contact trace as well. I don't, I don't know why that would differ. We haven't heard that from our county health department right now. They're still asking us to report any cases. They're still asking us to contact trace. I know that one, we had one staff member that had a case, and that staff member told me that the health department called them yesterday, so that they've been home for about a week right now, so. I'm really not sure how this is all going to roll out because they were very non-definitive on the phone last week. They want to help us the best they can. They know that we all want to be back in school, and they're trying to do the best they can. And again, you heard strongly recommended, and quite honestly, I copied their verbiage. They said strongly recommend masks, so I'm saying we strongly recommend masks.
Well, thanks for staying on top of it. It's best to be never ending.
The county numbers, statewide numbers have gone up. I, there's a, I tried to print out, but it was too small. I will forward that to you. There's a statewide, it's still under about, it's still under 2%, it's a 1. something percent in the state. It was the last number. And understand, those are two weeks in arrears, so that goes back to like the, maybe last week of July, that's how they collect, that's how the state health department collects the numbers. But I'll, again, I tried to print it, it was too small, it was smaller than math, so you wouldn't be able to read it. But I'll forward that, I'll forward that to you, so you can see the most recent numbers that they, that they sent to us, the health department sent to us.
Mm-hmm. Okay, thank you.
Just, I want to just chime in. So, I, I am really conflicted, like, really conflicted, not only as a board member, but as a parent and as an educator. Super conflicted. Like, I don't think, being on school board, I've ever been more conflicted at an issue. I, honestly, I hate masks. I hate them. I hate them. They are uncomfortable. They are a nuisance. They're causing my jaw to hurt. Like, I don't like them, and I can't wait till they're not a necessity. But I'm try, like, I'm trying to look at the big picture in this whole thing. And so, like, I'm almost in my mind and on paper writing like a pro and con list, okay? And I guess I, I'm in fear of the what-ifs, which I know will kill you, but, you know, what if, if we continue to allow it to be optional? What if, one, a kid gets sick? I mean, that would just be awful, okay? Two, what if kids aren't, you know, the, it would be up to the parents. I'm thinking more of the younger kids. The older kids, I think, you know, again, they can be vaccinated, they can listen to directions of wear your mask. The younger kids, you know, parents can be saying, I want them to be masked, telling their kids, well, then they see their best friend sitting next to them, and because it's optional, they're not wearing it. And then, how does that, how is that equal? How is that fair? You're sitting in a hot classroom, you know, and you've got to wear one and you don't. So, I just, I worry about what that's going to cause. You know, how much of that, of like the teaching is going to be taken away of dealing with that kind of stuff? I also worry about if the numbers keep growing, I'm not a scientist, I'm not a doctor by any means, if the numbers keep growing, how does this affect the big picture? Are we going to end up remote? Like, I don't want to do that again. As an educator, as a parent, that was awful. That was awful. I don't think any of us want that. So, I guess, you know, in my mind, like, if, if we go to mask mandatory, like, okay, you know what? We know that it, it's healthy, so to speak, minus like, you know what I'm saying? Like, there, yes, are there mental health things? Absolutely.
There's conflicting reports on that too, as well, for children who'd be wearing masks in terms of breathing their own breath in for eight hours a day. I don't think, I don't think there's a.
Okay, well, and again, that could be a flip side of both sides. There's not enough research. It just hap, you know, it's just been going on. But I guess that, that is my fear. Like, I want the smallest amount of disruption to the education of our children. First of all, I want them safe. Second of all, I want the smallest amount of disruption. I do not want to be remote again. I do not want kids having to be quarantined or whole classes having to be quarantined because, you know, we weren't being safe. However, I totally get the idea too of the optional thing. And for me, like, the older kid, like, again, I'm not worried about middle school enough. Like, that, like, we've got this. They're playing sports, they've been doing, like, it's, it's the younger kids that I really, and like, how do we protect those kids?
The problem is, though, if you look at the statistics that I sent you, those kids aren't being affected. I have more risk of her being affected than I do of kindergarten.
What I'm hearing, and again, I'm not a scientist, I do try to listen to both sides of the news, okay, that they're seeing more and more of the ICU patients and things like that be children, and whether that's in the form of RSV or something like that.
Is that more than one, or is that more than 100?
But again, you know, and you know what, honestly? Do any of us really know the numbers and the facts? No, because they're, they're messed up.
I've talked to a couple pediatricians in regards to this, and they're just not seeing cases in children. They're like, this is, you know.
I'm hearing that they're seeing more though with this Delta variant, and that's from medical.
And the health department hasn't broken, there's an increase in numbers. They're not breaking it down by age. And the health department is not giving us that this is up to six, that we're not getting any age delineation.
They're not breaking it down by age.
Right. And, and the other part that the, that the, the doctor from Heidi Gouett made a point last week was, you got to understand that RSV is also, and I don't, she tried to, I don't know what RSV is, it's another.
It's a breathing.
It's another breathing.
I saw it.
But, but RSV is now.
On the rise.
On the rise as well, so there's, they're not even separating that number out, so.
Does that do to wearing masks?
No, and I'm not, so I'm just telling you, they've, they've really kind of backed off on how they present the numbers, other than to say that, you know, that they've got that global map and the numbers are up in Ohio, that not, like they are in the South, that they're, they're going crazy right now in, in Texas, Alabama, Florida, the southern states have really kind of exploded with their, with their numbers. And I, I think that the fear is that it's, it's come in this way. Quite honestly, that's, that's what, that's what their conversation is, so.
I just feel that we could spend all day saying, what, what is the storm that came through?
I want to go back though to it, okay? So, so that's kind of where I'm at. And like, literally, I called Tom today, or Mr. Evans today, and I was like, at first I was like, no, like, mask, mask should be optional, like, you know, two weeks ago when things were much calmer with numbers. Today, I was like, I'm on the fence. I don't, I don't know. And to be honest with you, I think I'm comfortable in all three of my roles with them being optional, with the understanding that it can change at any time, meaning if we return and, you know, again, I'm going to get these numbers wrong, Jamie, because it depends what the numbers are, what, what channel you watch, or what, you know, article you read. If the numbers start going back up to when they were, when we needed to be remote, you know, like, really bad numbers, then I, I would say, hmm, maybe we need to look at this, okay? Maybe we need to, to get these masks back.
And I think that's, and I would tell you, that, that's been Ben Haggettish at Independence, that's, that's his conversation with the board, that he, that please understand that if something skyrockets, we have the ability to, to switch to masks for as long as we need to, if, if it, if it jumps off the chart. And, and he's the one, and, and again, the five of us are talking on a daily basis, that their board meeting is tomorrow night. He's certain that they're going to stay with strongly recommended, but he also has been emphatic about the ability that if this thing does skyrocket in a week's time, to call board members, say, listen, it's Friday, we have to get a notice out that on Monday we need to be in masks based on, if we had an outbreak in the building, we had, where they, you know, last year they had to shut a grade down at Independence because they had an outbreak, so just.
And I'm okay with that.
Just to have the ability to do that.
Like, I'm okay with it. And I will say too, because I'm reading like in sports, you know, my kids are out there tackling face-to-face people, and it's not mandatory there.
Spitting on each other.
Well, I hope they're not spitting on each other.
When you hit each other in football, that's.
I'm just saying, I'm not there yet, Jamie, with the spitting on each other. But, you know, like, so I, I'm okay. I could sleep a little bit better, I think, having it optional, but I will say, because I feel like the people that are strong about masks can still mask up, have their kids mask up, but I think if, if we're hearing like a lot of social issues or there's bullying going on, and again, these are all the what-ifs, but if some of these issues start becoming bigger, I, I would be comfortable as a board member to say, we need to go mask mandated.
And a question?
Exactly. That's where I go.
Corporations now are requiring the vaccine. I know some, some people, they have numbers on how many of the employees are percentage-wise vaccinated. You guys have any?
I will, I can, I can, we didn't keep, because when we did the census, I did not purposely for HIPAA reasons keep a list, but I will tell you that we had almost 90% of our employees get vaccinated last year when it was offered.
See, that's fantastic. To me, like, I mean, I know there's a, you're worried about the children, but.
Yeah.
To me, I'm more worried about your teachers and things of that nature, if everyone's had their opportunity to be vaccinated, well.
Because we opened up to coaches too, so we, we had about, and, and we don't, they don't fall into our foot, so we, we had about 160 people attend the vaccinations that were offered through the ESC from our district that were free, so. But, but I think looking at that as far as, and, and knowing that some people had gotten it outside of the district as well, that there were some people that, that had medical conditions that had already seen their physician, had gotten it prior to the county offering it for us, so there were some anomalies. But we, and again, I didn't, I didn't want to step on anybody's toes HIPAA-wise to actually keep a list, and, because if, if it does come up, one of the questions we'll have to ask is, are you vaccinated? If they didn't have a mask on, are you, because then that kicks into some of the protocols that we have, because then we have to ask. And I, and I think the county will then come back and ask as well, so.
And it does make it, so if we do this optional thing, it does make it a little bit more tedious on the part of the school for contact tracing, for things like that, for classroom behavior management, like, it, it's, it's not going to be super smooth sailing. Just saying, just pointing out.
No, and that was, because that was the, with the optional, in, in this scenario arose during our administrative meetings, Jamie, you, you test positive, Skylar is supposed to be wearing a mask because her mom says, okay, but it's optional, but maybe she takes it off third period and she's sitting next to you. Now, now our teachers are having to take attendance on a period basis to see who's wearing a mask and who's not wearing a mask. And that's not on a daily basis, because they, we have, when we do, when they test through our contact tracing, we have to know who was, because some of our classes, we just simply can't be outside of that three-foot radius range with the, we moved classes down here this year because to spread kids out. Scott, you have questions?
Um, I just wanted to, on your point of it being a distraction, like, if so-and-so is wearing a mask and their best friend isn't, I know from like being virtual, half virtual and other people being in school, that the mask being mandatory was also causing distraction in classes because the teachers were constantly like, so-and-so, you've got to put your mask up or cover your nose or.
Yeah. Agree.
So, just, you know.
And see, and one of the fears of the elementary.
Taking that off of the teachers.
Yeah. And one of the fears of the elementary is that, is that mommy, mom says, little Johnny, I want you to wear your mask today. Gets to school, none of his classmates are wearing it, little Johnny, we're not tracking that. We're not, I don't have teachers taking attendance to say who should be and who should. We haven't gone down that road yet, so.
After required parents to do jobs.
Yeah.
It's, you know.
But you can't control your kid. I mean, you don't know what your kid's doing.
Yeah.
My kids learn how to open, take his mask on and off his nose without his hands. So, he could do that, and it goes.
It's that important to you as a family.
Right. Agree.
Going to educate your child, right? If your child has an allergy to something, it's not the rest of the world's issue to protect your child as much as it is your child's.
Got you. But as a school board.
Yeah.
Our job is to blanket cover every, making sure that we're making policies and establishing rules, if you will, that keep everybody the safest.
Because we, so, you know, we can't, we can't actually like implement rules on an individual basis, just like you're saying. I think, so like, so to answer your question about some of the corporations and what I'm seeing too, I just got messages from people that work in the industry that I work in that are going critical travel only, like, they're shutting down travel, masks in the offices. And that was for three companies that are in our industry, not ours, but otherwise. These are out of state though, but these are, these are like starting to creep. So, I think I'm, I'm where, I'm where you are, I think, because I think that you're looking at, you know, you could, you could look at these numbers and you could support your argument any way possible, and there's a division right down the line.
Been spinning it for two years now.
Well, it's not spinning it. Okay, let's, let's, let's say it's, we're not spinning it. We're not spinning it, okay? We're trying to use.
No, I'm not saying, I'm saying it depends on who you're talking to, whoever they want those numbers to look.
So.
Remember when it was just we needed to be six feet apart? Remember that was going to save us, and then it was, well, you need to wear a mask.
Well.
And then we got to a point where we needed two masks.
We only can be guided by like.
Science changes with, with new knowledge, the rules change because the science is more aware of what's going on, so.
And we're not going to get into the debate of whether.
Yeah. That's not solvable.
Yeah.
That's just not, I'm not going to change.
No, I understand. The thing is, we just can't go, well, we have to depend on their word as gospel because they've been wrong.
But that's here from, I want to hear from the board members, just because if we are making.
So, we're, we're on that too, is I, I agree with the strongly recommended, but again, this is, this is evolving and changing. So, I, I think that we have to basically monitor this, just like some of the other school districts are doing, which one that looks at it every two weeks.
Bay.
You know, Bay. So, I, I think that that's a, that's a reasonable approach, because, because, okay, you know, it, it basically, you know, you can put the masks on for those that are, really feel strongly about this too. And I, I think that, you know, as, as the numbers increase though, I mean, we have to really look at it, because I, I think that, you know, because, you know, this, this could get, and it does affect, you know, some of the younger kids. I know that they're, they're starting to fill up some of the ICUs and the children's hospitals down south. Okay, so that, that's, that's what's happening for sure. Now, you know, so that, so again, is that going to come over to Ohio? Now, you know, so that, so again, is that going to come over to Ohio? I, I don't know, I guess we don't know, but maybe we'll have better knowledge about that in a month, two months from now, and maybe things have changed at that point. So that's, I think I'm where you are too, Lindy, it's like to say, let's go with the strongly recommended for the beginning of the school year, but then actually it could be, we need to look at it like on a constant basis going forward. If those numbers start to spike, and we start to get where they were at last year, I think we've got to make some different decisions at that point as well.
And if we're seeing it, so like if we're actually, like I said, there's an outbreak on the, on the football team, or there's an outbreak in second grade, you know, like if there's actual like concrete evidence that we have here in our little bubble that it's being affected, I mean, we need to make changes to make it safer.
But the point is, is that we have to look out for, you know, the whole district, 850 kids and not just, you know, a couple, so we're trying to make decisions that are going to be blanketed across the board, that are satisfying everyone, but we can't do that, because no one will be ever satisfied, okay, so like, that, that's where kind of we're at, and so I think that we're trying to make the best and most logical and reasonable decisions that we can make, and I think that the, you know, the strongly recommended with the, with the, with the process to look at this on a periodic basis is probably, is the right move at this point.
And I will be really upset if all these districts change their mind by next Wednesday, and we're the only one doing what we're do, whatever we decide, just saying.
And I, I'm in agreement, that's what.
Because that will happen, surprise yourself.
My last text was at, with that group that I just told, it was 231 today.
Mrs., does anyone else, board members, you guys want to?
If you guys remember a year ago at this time, we had a very great, well planned out plan of what we were going to do, we approved it and everything, and before school started, everything had to change.
Right in the rear end.
That was because of the way.
Had to answer the bill on the front lawn.
I was going to say, and I forget how many people even show up, right? Yeah, because most people don't care here, right? Like, I would imagine.
They have different ways of expressing when they care.
Well, there's difference.
And a hundred percent, honestly, I've heard on both sides of this, I've had two or three emails saying that we should wear them, I've had conversations with parents, individual parents saying, we want to choose, we want the option for our kids, so I've, I've had equal amounts of both ends of this as I, once I started printing this out, so.
Mr. Evans, in your opinion, if you go strongly recommended masks, what in your mind do you think the total population of schools is going to have masks?
Um, I think that'll vary, I think it'll be higher in the elementary buildings, because those kids have not been able to be vaccinated, I, I think middle school and high school, I, I would venture, I would think it would be low, quite honestly, because I just have that feeling that they've had a lot of people, parents have, if they wanted a student to be vaccinated, they could have been vaccinated, if not, and then there's, I think, I don't think it's going to be high, quite honestly.
I'll tell you, I, I, so I was doing like a summer school at my work the past two weeks, middle school level, and it was 50/50 prior to it being mandated, two days ago.
Bill, I've been wrong on every prediction I've made since COVID started, so I, I, I really, and I'm not saying that facetiously, I just, I just have, so just when I think I, this, I know where this thing's going, it, it takes a turn on me, and it, but again, people have been split down the middle with, as far as those contacting me about where they're at on this.
I just don't see the harm in letting people decide where the, where the mask.
And that was, a year ago, out front, Bill's words ring in my head, we want a choice.
Right. We're just, I mean, it's over.
Make sure it's an informed choice. I have in front of me an article from the Atlantic magazine that came out this morning, and I'm going to read a section of it to you. The COVID-19 vaccines have done an extraordinary job of stamping out disease and death, but as the hyper transmissible Delta variant hammers the United States, the greatest hardships are being taken on by the unvaccinated, a population that includes some 50 million children younger than the age of 12. Across the country, pediatric cases of COVID-19 are skyrocketing alongside cases among unimmunized adults. Child hospitalizations have now reached an all time pandemic high. In the last week of July, just two weeks ago, nearly 72,000 new coronavirus cases were reported in children, almost one fifth of all total known infections in the United States, and a doubling of the previous week's stats. That tells me that there is a serious problem among people who cannot, we know, among unvaccinated people, that's why the results are so high in the states with low rates, tells me that among unvaccinated people have a very great risk, and children in elementary school cannot be vaccinated, so.
These are hotspots, too, right? We're talking hotspots, we're not talking generally.
This is a U.S. statistic.
The Atlantic, US, use, use, quoted US numbers.
The Atlantic is a national magazine, now.
Okay, so the New York Times says the same thing, but then NPR doesn't say that, so.
NPR, no.
Three other articles.
Yeah. Make, make sure you know what the risk is to your child if we choose not to mandate, and make, I think we need to, through Tom's talks.
He has that.
Continue to do that, continue to hammer on that, and, and if we want to go with the every two weeks, make a permanent.
Well, but, and I would say that, unless the board tells me otherwise, I would add to Tom Talks, please understand that if, if there's a spike in cases, we reserve the right to shift the masks.
I would say spike in cases or any change, like, this can change it at a, like, this is not going to be something that we're going to wait for a board meeting.
Right.
If something happens.
We do not need to approve, the board does not need to approve mask policy.
No, not at all, and again, Lakewood, an email went out to parents, it went out on a Wednesday, or I don't even know my days of this week, it went out on a Tuesday, it started on Wednesday, it could be as simple as that, an alert now?
You know, we have a mask policy, and it says the superintendent may implement the mask policy during the pandemic, so it's the superintendent who may enact that, but he also, means he may choose to make it optional, so authority, according to board policy, can't lie to the superintendent, it's not required for action, because the policy is exactly what it is.
Lucky you, Mr. Evans.
So, yeah, I hate to do that to Mr. Evans, but it really does.
I think you made great decisions, in hindsight and everything where we are at today.
So if I could just chime in on a perspective that I had through a phone call last night from one of the district residents, and firstly, thank you for coming tonight, thank you for offering your opinions, and doing so calmly and civilly, you've made your point, and I clearly heard you loud and clear. The other side, I got a phone call last night from a very concerned district resident, and they're asking about their student who is under age 12, obviously can't be vaccinated, and I thought they made some pretty interesting kind of big picture, kind of policy type points, and I'll just offer them up, so you understand what I'm hearing as a board member from other people with different views. And that person was suggesting that there be a mandatory mask policy for two, two primary reasons, one, our district isn't currently offering or doesn't plan to offer a remote, I'll call it a synchronous learning program that's staffed by live, not by, but that's staffed by teachers as we did last year, so that option for a comparable education has been taken off the plate, so to speak, for the elementary students. The other point that the individual made is that, as we've been discussing, this, this group of individuals are ineligible for vaccines, so even if they wanted to take some type of additional precaution, they can't, and so the combination for the lack of educational alternatives, combined with the lack of their inability to get vaccine, led this parent to conclude that, that a mandatory masking policy was, was in everyone's best interest. That's the other side of the point, and I just had that conversation last night, and poor Mr. Evans, I talked to him first thing this morning, and we went through the entire conversation that we're having now, so thank you for coming, thanks for offering your comments, but we are truly hearing 180 degree perspectives, all are valid, but as I, as other people have said, part of my job as a board member is to make decisions for policy for the, that affect the entire district, and I consider student and staff health and well being to be a paramount responsibility. Of course you do.
So how do you feel about it?
You know, I've listened to everybody that's spoken tonight, and I, I could support a stronger mask policy, but I, I'm willing to, to forego any type of further action and just defer to Mr. Evans as, as, you know, as good, well, he's made a lot of good decisions over the last year, and they've been tough ones, I continue to defer to him and his judgment as to what we should do as a district, it's, it's not fair to hamstring him with my, my personal concerns.
But I think it's also important as board members that we're giving, you know, I, I don't think it's fair to throw one person under the bus to make a decision for, for the whole district, so I think.
I think that the board's been very good about letting me know where you're at, and this is, this is, this is touchy.
I just want the public to know, because that's.
And I, I get that, but, but through the whole process, you know, all last year, we were back and forth, and we talked, what I appreciate is the ability to talk through some of those things, and did all those work for everybody? No, they didn't, they absolutely didn't, does this work for everybody? No, it absolutely does not, that, and, but, you know, we're, we're trying to do the best we can, and I, for me, I keep coming back to, what can I do to get the most kids back in the building? And I want, we need, we need kids back in our buildings, we need them back five days a week, and, and, and I keep kind of rolling back to that, that, that part of it, so. And I've had parents on both ends, and we've also thrown out, I mean, I've put in Tom Talks, if, if there's a reason that your kid, your concern is so great that you don't want your student there, that, to contact Mr. Young, because we do, there is a curriculum, it's not going to be a synchronous, and a lot of these districts that are saying that, I think in a penitence quota, they're not teaching synchronously, they're, they're offering up the same curriculum that we're offering through the ESC, that's a self paced curriculum that we will have, we'll have our staff members check in on a weekly basis with students that choose that option, to make sure kids aren't getting lost along the way, but, you know, that, that's our commitment to that, but, but as I look at that, that list I read to you, Cleveland City is going to offer an online, at their size they can, but we simply can't, I can't pull a teacher from every grade level to say, you're going to teach synchronously while the other three or four, and then when you get in the middle school, high school, there's, we're crossing over, and it's just not, it's not feasible, it's just not feasible.
So this is, this is more homeschooling with support, is that?
It's, it's an online, it's a self paced online curriculum, in other words, the students will, they're still going to have their, their laptop, their Chromebook, they'll pull the curriculum up, it's a basic curriculum through the ESC, and I, I look here, five or six of the schools are doing that, and we, we, the same thing, we've offered up the same thing, and, and we've gone, I don't know, maybe one step further than what some of the other districts are, I know that, well, we have staffs that are set up to be tutors that will have checking in with students to see what their progress is, and if they're having issues or problems with any of the curriculum to kind of help them through those things, it's not going to be a daily check in, but, but we'll, we'll be monitoring their progress on that, so.
Mrs. Edder, Mr. Souchacki?
I just wanted to say that I think that it has to be handled as things progress. I mean, I know people right now that are worried about what's happening with the variants that are out there, that some people are like refraining from going to like a planned luncheon if it's inside a restaurant, opposed to being outside, I mean, that's gone that way, and I just wanted to say that, like Ms. Jordanitz, first and foremost, the safety and the well being of these students, that's the number one priority, and whatever we have to do as a district to make sure that every child is safe here in this school, that's what we need to do. I'm hoping that this strongly recommended mask suggestion requirement, I don't know if we want to call it a requirement, but suggestion will go over well with the students and the staff, and again, it's a fluid situation, if things change, then we have to change accordingly. And I wanted to add just one personal note here as well. My great nephew had COVID, and he, you know, had normal symptoms, was sick for a little bit, a week or so. Months later, he almost died. His blood pressure shot up to almost 200 over, I don't know, 100, something like that, and almost suffered a stroke and died. The doctors said it was related to COVID, it was a side effect from the COVID that he had, and it was, again, very rare that now he's being, he was being studied and everything about it, but he came so close to dying, and it was after the fact, and after everybody thought that everything was okay. Again, it was our situation, we experienced it, I've known some people, not directly, but I've known about three people who have died from COVID, so I, it, it's out there, it's something we never had to deal with before, it's something new we have to deal with, we can't ignore it, and I just say, if we err on the side of being more cautious, then so be it, so that's where I stand right now, I think we're making the right choice of what we're doing, but if things change, we have to, we have to modify and change along with it.
Okay, any other discussion for superintendent's discussion?
Just to let the board know, I, I got a phone call yesterday from a reporter in Columbus about the mascot, I referred him to the, I referred her to the website, to the community meeting discussion, I forwarded you what Channel 19 put out, there's two lawmakers that have proposed legislation, Channel 8 emailed me and asked me for a comment, I just referred them to the community meeting on the website, and, and that was, if you're approached with that, that just came out today, so that I've kind of doubled back, the young lady in Columbus wasn't very cooperative, so I'm anxious to see what that article will come out like, but, you know, Kevin Freeman, I just responded via email to Kevin, so.
Okay. Anything, I see your notes now, you said you put athletics, do you want to share anything positive about athletics, maybe?
Everything's up and running, and, you know, we have scrimmages going, and, and the golf teams already started, both golf teams have already started, soccer had a scrimmage, unfortunately got a little lightning tonight, but up, up and going on that, I just wanted to make mention, before we circle back around, I want to thank Jamie and Kelly Mecklenburg, they kind of took it upon themselves that Valley Views, Rod Sale last week to do a fundraiser for the scholarship that we're going to start in Mrs. Basel's name, they raised $2,000 on Saturday, and they're going to be, come in and meet with us and help us to write up a criteria for what that scholarship's going to look like, and just one thing on a state level, Paulo de Maria, the superintendent, was set to resign in September, they made John Richards the interim superintendent, John resigned his interim superintendency, so I don't know who the state superintendent of education's going to be after the second week of September, so it kind of, like the hot potato right now, I don't know who's going to end up with it, not me, but who's going to end up with it in their, in their hands, so.
Sounds just like school board here at Gens.
So that's, that's, those are, there, so we can circle back around to the business then if that.
Okay, thank you, and thank you for being flexible, everyone was switching things around. All right, so we are up with treasurer's business, Mr. Mucio.
Thank you, Mrs. Schuchert, just a couple items tonight, item 5A, which is the motion to approve the minutes of the June 23, 2021 regular meeting, the June 30, 2021 special meeting, and the July 28, 2021 special meeting, as found in attachment T1. Number 6A, motion to accept the bank reconciliation financial reports and payments for board review as of June 30, 2021, as prepared and certified by the treasurer is accurate, as found in attachment T2. Number 6B, motion to approve new vendors for the school district for W9's cash, as found in attachment T3, ask for those motions for approval tonight.
Okay, I'll take a motion to approve the treasurer's business consent agenda motions at this time.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Nevin.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Dobbins, discussion.
I won't jump into 6A, all of our financial reports, because we talked about those earlier in the presentation tonight, item 6B, the new vendors who were to open, item T3, we just have a handful, number one, for cheerleading uniforms, these are all just adding the vendor to the school district, it's Greek to me, number two is fit and fun playscapes for special education supplies and equipment, number three, interactive metronome for special education supplies and equipment, fun and function for special education supplies and equipment, South Paw Enterprises and School Moves for special education supplies and equipment as well, so just the six.
Okay, Crowe Pop?
Oh, just before I do, I just want to make one clarifying point, with respect to the cheerleader uniforms, it's my understanding that those are part of a routine rotation, it's not an unusual contract.
No, they're, they're rotation for replacement uniforms.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, and actually, we'll have the, the flag corps will be coming, if we can find something reasonable, they're very, very pricey, so, and there's not a lot, not a lot of choices out there for us, so, but they're, he's, Mr. Calves with Mrs. Book, and to try and, because they're, they're due for uniforms as well.
I thought the cheerleading ones were crap pricing.
Hold your breath.
Okay, Crowe Pop?
Mr. Nevin?
Aye.
Mr. Dobbins?
Aye.
Mrs. Edder?
Aye.
Mr. Souchacki?
Aye.
Mrs. Schuchert?
Aye, motion passes 5-0, treasurer's discussions, comments?
Just had two items, 8A, discussion GAAP conversion started, so the fiscal 21 GAAP conversion has begun by the auditor of state's office, so we are in the last of a three year contract that we had signed with the auditor state's office to perform the GAAP. Ohio law requires that local public offices file their annual financial reports with the auditor state's office further, it requires all counties, cities, school districts, including ESCs and community schools and government insurance pools to prepare their financial reports pursuant to GAAP, unless an extension has been approved by the auditor state's office, entities filing on a GAAP basis have 150 days following the end of their fiscal year to submit their financial statements to the auditor state's office, so we had our auditor who performed it last year come out on site, so he's been here a couple days, sat in the media center a couple days last week too, so he's already underway on that, so that's started. Item 8B, oh, also, before I leave, 8A, I reached out to the auditor state's office to sign a new contract with them for more GAAP services, so they're in process of writing that up, so I'll have something to share with the board later for approval for that.
Any news on the audit at all?
I talked to Matt Goldman last week too, I'd emailed him to call me, and I was actually able to call him like Monday of this week, I guess he said he was out of the office on Friday, I'm like, great, taking vacation, I was, I kind of gave him a little stuff there, but, we have a good rapport back and forth, you know, I, I said, Matt, you know, where do we stand with this audit, and he's like, ah, we're working on it, we're kind of underwater, and I said, okay, can you give me something to tell, you know, my board, because I've been telling him that, you know, the change in people and COVID's really thrown off, he's like, Matt, that's it, so they had, you know, change in staff, so they're pulling staff from other jobs to try to finish ours, as well as just COVID kind of threw a wrench, so, you know, we're low risk.
Yeah, that's it, so there might be a backlog, then they're auditing years and future years, then backwards, then I would imagine, okay, that makes sense, that's, that's fine, I understand, because of COVID and everything, and resources.
Right, the GAAP is by law that they have to file at 150 days, so think Thanksgiving, that it has to be done by, so that's where we started now, and then the auditors audit that GAAP financial statement, so essentially it's everybody from the auditor's office looking at our books. So, essentially, it's everybody from the auditor's office looking at our books. And they all work in the same office, there's, you know, separation for conflict of interest, but it's still all the auditor's office that we prove.
Thanks, that's great, thank you.
Item 8B, discussion health cost containment committee on growth hormone prescription drug. Um, so yesterday, we held a health cost containment committee meeting, and in attendance was myself, Yelena Rodriguez, which is our payroll and HR specialist, Tom Evans, superintendent, Matt Young, assistant superintendent, Mrs. Edder, Mr. Dobbins, Board of Education members, Aaron Zink, president of Chase, Karikovich, Chase member, Johnny Roy, president of CHAT, and Angelo Cattoloni, CHAT member. The meeting was regarding an urgent issue that deals with a prescription drug for growth hormone. Our medical insurance covers growth hormone therapy, but our prescription drug insurance does not cover growth hormone category medication. And one member is in need of this prescription drug. A member has appealed to Suburban Health to allow, but has been denied. I reached out to Suburban Health on adding growth hormone category medication, which includes nine growth hormone medication drugs into the cost of our existing insurance. Suburban Health priced this increase to be approximately $1 per pay for our members for approximately $700 annually, and calculates to be approximately $4,000 annually for the district. Uh, the committee decided to move ahead with both unions voting on whether to add the price increase or not. If the outcome is yes to add the cost, both unions will need to vote yes on the change, as well as the Board of Education. Any questions on that, or?
I just, just since we were there, we had the knowledge of, of the discussion, um, the fact of how costly this drug is, and in, in return, what we would be paying over the course of a year to help get this drug for this person.
Right, yep, absolutely. We have a process in place, which is written into the collective bargaining agreements, which is this health cost containment committee. And, yeah, we met as committee, and the committee's going forward with the process that's in place. Um, and decided to move ahead to have both unions vote on adding this price or not. So, if both the unions vote yes, then it comes to the Board of Education to vote on the increase. And if the Board of Education votes yes, then it's, uh, it's done.
I think a key component of the, yeah, the, this is, there's no generic, this is, this is probably about a $4,000 prescription. And, and it's covered through our medical, so if this student were hospitalized, they could essentially give it to them in the hospital, but they, it, through a doctor's office, they can't. And that's the difference in the medical plan and our, and our prescription plan, and there's just a gap in there, and this is one way to close it. Anytime there's any, uh, fear of, somebody says, well, what about something else? This, this all has to go through the committee process for approval, so that's where we're at with this. The unions would approve it first, and then we would bring it to the board for approval.
And another thing that I just wanted to say about it, too, that I thought was a plus for this, is the fact that it wasn't just the one drug, but it was nine drugs within the growth hormone category. So, if this goes forward, this child gets this drug, um, and we find, they find out later that maybe another one in this category fits better, then they're, they're already approved for it, it don't have to go again.
Covers all nine drugs.
Yeah, so I thought that was a good component of this as well.
Right, and as you and Mr. Evans are talking about, um, you know, the cost for this medication, you know, it's a couple thousand dollars per month. Um, the cost for our district, as well as our members, is reasonable, um, which is why we're bringing it forward for discussion that we'll have, so, um, you know, it's a reasonable cost for, you know, incredible benefit. Um, and then if there wasn't insurance, it's an extremely high cost for that one member to go purchase it, so. And we've had savings from the most recent healthcare issue that we tackled, which was vision and dental. We went with new providers for a significant cost savings. So, if we're really looking to be cost neutral with that cost savings, we're kind of fitting this in, too.
Matt had a great idea that at the end of the year, we're going to sit down with Suburban, and we're going to do an audit to see if there's any other gaps between the medical and the prescription part, that's just to see. And look at what our districts have. I said, one of the things that, when our, when our, both of our unions agreed in 2012 to go from three plans down to one plan, that prob, that might have been where a gap was created. And by doing that, uh, the unions have saved us millions of dollars over the last eight years. I think initially, the first two years, there might have been a, almost a $3 million savings to the district because of only one plan happened to be managed versus the three different plans that, that a lot of districts offer.
And the member is very thankful that we're going through this process. Can't disclose because of PIPo, but.
Okay.
That's all I have for that, thank you very much.
All right, sending it over to you, boss, Mr. Evans.
All right, superintendent's business, um, A, uh, motion to approve the, adopt the bus van routes for 2021 school year per the attached route schedule. B, um, motion to approve the billing, uh, billing hours for 2021 years per the attached schedule. Employment, classified staff, motion to approve employment of Sarah Clements, elementary school monitor, lunch recess for 2021 school year per the adopted monitor wage step one, not to exceed four and a half hours per day. B, motion to approve April Basella, uh, lunch recess for 2021 for the adopted monitor wage step one, not to exceed four and a half hours per day. Scroll down here. C, motion to, uh, approve, uh, employment of Yvonne Adams as middle school, high school monitor for lunch for 2021 school year per the adopted, uh, monitor wage schedule step two, two hours per day. And D, motion to approve the increase in the maximum daily hours for Laura Conte, elementary school lunch monitor, uh, for 2021, from four to not to exceed four and a half hours. Business and employment, motion to approve the attached substitute teacher list for 2021, 21, 22 school year uh, from the Educational Service Center. Motion to approve the employment of Nicholas Strawn as marching band volunteer for 21, 22 school year, in response to successful deletion of BCI. Background check, I ask for approval of that business.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve the superintendent's consent, business consent agenda motions?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Souchacki.
Second.
Second, and I'll give it to Mrs. Edder. Discussion. We don't have any discussion?
That, that should, I think that, actually, we're in a good place with monitors. We've, we've had such a hard time getting lunch and recess monitors, so, so I know Mrs. Houtz has worked very diligently, and that, that frees up time for our teachers, too, you know, that's one of the contractual issues that we're, we're constantly looking at. So, uh, Yeoman's job in that part, she's going to conduct an in-service for, for those monitors as well. So, I, I think we're, uh, knock on wood, in a pretty good place right now, staff-wise. Um, and the, the helper for the band, the band, uh, Mrs. Schrader's excited, she's got, I saw them out there, they were practicing today, and, and, uh, excited, how we doing, that sky is all going good? Okay, good.
It sounded good.
But, uh, um, you know, that was, we all know the, we all know how we felt about Mr. Sokol, and those were huge shoes to fill in her enthusiasm, and thanks to the band boosters, because they've really stepped up and helped out. I have to tell you, Mrs. Kattler and, and that, that group of band boosters has been here daily, helping out and getting through some of those, the fitting of the uniforms, so, ready to go.
Awesome. Thank you so much, so, roll call.
Mr. Souchacki.
Aye.
Mrs. Edder.
Aye.
Mr. Dobbins.
Aye.
Mr. Nevin.
Aye.
Mrs. Schukert.
Aye, motion passes 5-0. Did you have any further comments? I didn't want to.
I've talked enough tonight.
Next up, board business resolutions. Um, I'll make a motion to approve the superintendent's request for attendance at the 2021 Vassal Fall Conference for a fee of $325. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second for Mrs. Edder. Any discussion?
They're going back in person this year, we.
Where's it at?
They tried, it's at Columbus, they tried virtually last year, and it stunk. And I, I think that message was, and as we saw some of the OSBA stuff, I think that the, if, if, and who knows what's going on right now, but if we can get in person, that's always just a really valuable conference that goes on. Actually, um, Alison Rose will be presenting, we made arrangements for Alison Rose to present to the superintendents, and I'm trying to work it out, because the principals are meeting at the same week at a different location to see if I can get them in to present to the principals as well. And they'll also be presenting at OSBA, so we, we sponsored the Alison Rose Foundation to, to speak at OSBA, so, uh, Jamie's really got the, or, uh, Mike's really got the, the group working hard.
Awesome, nice. Okay, um, 16, board discussion comments.
Do we have to vote on that?
Well, let's vote.
Mrs. Schukert.
Aye.
Mrs. Edder.
Aye.
Mr. Dobbins.
Aye.
Mr. Nevin.
Aye.
Mr. Souchacki.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0, board discussion slash comments. Mr. Nevin, got anything there?
Actually, um, a couple things. I might have a, a conflict for the September 8th, uh, board meeting. I have to basically be in Chicago for presentation, 8 o'clock in the morning on the 9th, so I probably need to travel that night, um, unfortunately. So, I, I'll have to see unless, basically, things change with COVID and the Delta variant, I might have to be out, so. Um, just to let you know about that. And then the other things, again, I know all of our athletic teams are starting, everybody's going to be going back to school. Uh, good luck to everybody coming back into the, into the buildings, um, you know, for a new start to the year. Um, and also, good luck to the athletic teams, as they, they're their competitions right now. And, um, and I think that, uh, that's about it.
Same, as you said, for everyone going back to school and all of that. Um, I just, um, thanks to, uh, Mr. Wallace for the, uh, safety presentation tonight, and thank you to Mr. Muccio for, uh, the financial presentations tonight. Very, um, very important, very worthy, so thank you very much for all of that and the work that goes behind all that.
Mr. Souchacki. I had a parent approach me last night, um, very appreciative and thankful, wanted me to express her thanks for allowing her special needs student to be able to attend the programs at Independence. Said it's working out very, very well. The cooperation between our districts is, is really working for this student, and that program is really working for the student, so I wanted to pass that along. Uh, the Career Center will be following the same basic procedures that they did last year. Um, remember that the Career Center is very different from our, from our layout. They go in pods, they, they show up, they go as a group to a room, they're isolated from the rest of the school. Um, they tend to work somewhat separated from each other, depending on which career area they're in. You know, we had very minimal issues last year, and we're going to use essentially the same procedures as last year, which is masks recommended, everybody onsite.
It was, it was, it was mandated last year. It wasn't recommended, it was mandated.
Okay, but it's recommended this year.
Okay.
Um, and then the, I apologize for that.
No, that's okay, I just have experience with that.
The second thing is, uh, the Garfield Heights representative has resigned, that board member has resigned, so we'll be getting a new board member shortly. And that's it.
Okay, Mr.?
Yes, quickly, um, thanks to Mr. Janatovic and Mrs. Houtz for doing the last two coffee talks. I caught the first one, where Mr. Janatovic, uh, talked about returning to school um, at middle and high school level, and a few other initiatives. And, uh, I wasn't able to attend last week's coffee talks. Um, and, uh, kudos to the parents and, uh, and the, uh, teachers that have sponsored the effort for Mrs. Boswell's memorial. I was able to attend that Saturday morning, and it was, uh, very actively, very active, enthusiastic crowd.
It's great, I stopped by, too. They, they did a great job, there was a lot of people there. So, it was on Saturday morning, and Valley View's, um, right by the city hall there, so it was great.
Awesome. Um, I was here at the school at the football scrimmage, so I donated money. It was an easy go-to. Um, but it is, I mean, Jamie's, they're just a great family, and, you know, that the student's really affected by it, and it shows, you know, and how awesome for them to come up with a scholarship in her memory. As far as board discussion comments go, I think I'm tapped out today.
Just want to add, I said to board, I said, Mr. Nevin and Mrs. Edder, um, I wanted to try to get a communications group together, sent you an invitation, if that doesn't work, let me know, but I've invited Aaron Graham, Dave Walsh, uh, Mr. Kelvers, if we can sit around the table. Uh, you had some real, um, you expressed some concerns, and if we could sit down and, and, and I think that's, that's a good, we talked about it at our administrative retreat, about putting a, together a more comprehensive communication plan, because there's gaps in the crossover with athletics, who handles what, and I think that that mirrors that. And I, just so you know, that with the window closed for, um, uh, candidates, I reached out to the Stephanie.
Prowse.
Prowse. Uh, I left her voice messages to say that, you know, I left her my number, um, she can get in touch with me, and she wants to, now, Mr. Muccio and I have ordered her a set of the OSBA kind of board member books, beginning board member books, and then I've also told her that probably the board would be reaching out to her that during the transition time, she would be more than welcome to attend meetings, whatever your comfort level would be, uh, to, so we hit the ground running in January, so.
She literally lives across the street from me.
So, you guys can carpool.
Yeah, thinking about it.
Okay, moving on to item 17, board members may suggest any possible future agenda items. One I would suggest is that we take a vote on the mascot to see what we're going to do with it.
Next meeting?
Next meeting.
I've asked John Britton for a motion, to write up a motion. I, maybe, Lundy, I think, I'll have him contact you directly.
Oh, good. Okay. Um, also, you know, I, I think this goes without saying, Tom, but like, any, any updates that you have, like this spreadsheet is excellent with what this others, you know, surrounding school districts are doing, but also, you get a lot of frontline communication and information, so.
I'm trying to, just shoot it out to you as quickly as it comes in, so we have as much, I wish I were spending more time on educational issues right now, quite honestly, but this is the task at hand, so. We'll get as much out there as we can, trying to make the best decisions possible.
Awesome.
That's great, thank you.
And, and also, you know, I mean, I don't know if this is appropriate, too, but I'd like to hear about just what, what the challenges are, coming back with things optional, you know? Can imagine a lot, but, you know, just, I don't know. All right.
I think the mantra for, uh, the administrative retreat was no looking back. You know, there were some good last year, there were some things that we know that we needed to correct, but we're going to look forward, and we're going to focus on moving forward. That's going to be my message to the staff next week. Um, it's a new year, let's, you know, we learned some things last year, let's get better, that's what we've always done. We get up every morning, that's, the beauty of the staff is always being a lot better today than they were yesterday, and being better tomorrow, and I, let's get, let's continue to do that. That's the strength of who we have been as a district, and, and, and we'll be fine. If we, you know, we get, we get our students back, get buds back in the seat, we'll be, we'll be okay.
I like that.
Exactly.
Um, item number 18, it should be noted that the Board of Education members received their agenda several days prior to the actual meeting. Thus, they've had considerable opportunity to study it, ask questions, et cetera. Upcoming meetings will be Wednesdays at 7:00 PM, August 25th, September 8th, and September 22nd. At this time, I will make a motion to adjourn the meeting, can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Nevin, any discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Muccio.
Mrs. Schukert.
Aye.
Mr. Nevin.
Aye.
Mr. Dobbins.
Aye.
Mrs. Edder.
Aye.
Mr. Souchacki.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0, it is 9:06, and we are.